Welcome to the 5:30 PM July 26 City Council Presentations Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes, sir. This is a city council meeting to hear special recognitions and presentations. Council will not take any formal action on the agenda items at this meeting. All individuals wishing to speak may do so under petitions or requests from the public present. No sign up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak. All sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city council shall be placed in the box on the table in the council chamber.
Thank you. I see no minutes. City manager.
Onto special recognitions and presentations, item 4A. We'd like to recognize Ms. Tish Hood from the Building Department as the City of Titusville's Employee of the Month for June 2022. I believe Mr. Adams will be doing the presentation.
Hello, Board. I could go on and on for some time about Tish Hood. I wish every division in the City of Titusville had somebody like Tish Hood. She's an amazing staff member. She serves as our Senior Development Specialist. She came to the city and she worked her way up from admin to permit tech, now senior. She's literally my right hand. The Building Department issues over 5,000 permits a year, and you can find Tish's thumbprint on each and every one of those permits. She has some kind of form of administration on that. Recently, as you know, we've transitioned our software program, our operating system now, we're on a program called BSNA. It was a huge, tremendous data migration. It was a challenge for staff to learn that new system. Tish created a user manual, okay, that's an amazing resource for our staff members. I can't tell you how important it is for our new incoming staff members. Sometimes the folks at BSNA, they're great, they help us out, but sometimes they don't answer all the questions as to how to use the system. So Tish actually created a manual for staff members to use. She holds weekly meetings and trains our staff as to how to use the processes and procedures that we use on our new operating system. So even I've learned a tremendous amount of how to use the system that we're all somewhat still unfamiliar with. Again, I could go on and on about Tish, but I just, if those of you, I know some of you do know Tish and have had an opportunity to meet with her and talk with her. If you haven't had a chance to meet with her, I strongly encourage you to swing by, say hi, get to know her. She's just an amazing resource for our city, and I couldn't be more proud to work with her.
Thank you so very much. You're definitely one of the call behind the scenes, and without you, we don't get it done. And this guy will tell you that every day.
Absolutely.
So thank you very much. Get over here in the middle here. The guy over there, you hold this. Thank you so much.
Mayor, if I could, next item will be the construction of the Osprey nutrient removal upgrade project. Senator Tom Wright will provide a presentation on the state of Florida budget appropriation to the City Titusville on the amount of 500,000 for the construction of the Osprey nutrient removal project upgrade. Senator Wright, welcome to our city.
Want me to say a few words? First of all, Tish, I'd like to remind you that behind every guy is a very good woman that makes it happen. So we hire a lot of women in our companies. They do the job. Well, thanks for having me here today. It was a pleasure to be here. It means so much to me that we were able to, in this past legislation session, able to secure funds to assist in the funding of this Osprey water reclamation facility project. The state recognizes the significance need to take action to ensure that we protect this incredible natural resource in our state. And we talk about it oftentimes in Tallahassee. You know, water is two main reasons that water is so important, not only for us to be able to drink, but also for us to have tourists to come to Florida. That's why they come, to see our natural beauty. So it's very, very important to us. This project, like the Osprey Water Reclamation Facility, in order to ensure the water entering places like the Indian River Lagoon will be free of harmful nutrients and other contaminants. This project will mitigate some of the risks of reclaimed water and will help to restore the incredible Indian River Lagoon. So I would like to thank the mayor and the rest of the Titusville City Council for their hard work and efforts in pursuing us to make sure that we come through with this money that you so desperately requested. Projects like this will ensure that we protect Florida for future generations and maintain what makes this state such a unique and beautiful place to live. So it is my honor to present this $500,000 check from the State of Florida legislation to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much.
And there you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome, sir.
Can you get a couple pictures again? Good? Good, thank you. I want to thank you, Senator, for all you do for central Florida, what you do for Brevard County, what you do for the City of Titusville, and specifically in this case, what you do for our water. And obviously, water reclamation is pretty important. So again, thank you for your focus on us, and we appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, folks, thank you. See you all.
Next item is item 4C. The Water Resources Department will provide an update presentation on PFOS, and our Water Resources Director, Mr. Sean Stoffer, will provide counsel of this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good morning. Good morning. Good evening.
So if we could bring the presentation, okay, there we go. My name is Sean Stoffer, I'm the Water Resources Director for the City of Titusville, and tonight we're going to take a little time to talk about PFOS, provide you guys an update on where things stand today and where we're headed. At the last meeting, Mayor, you asked me a very direct question about the water and about whether I thought it was safe to drink.
Yes, I did.
And so I want to address that now, and I want to assure you that I think it's safe to drink. My children, my wife, and myself drink unfiltered City of Titusville tap water, and we have since we came back to Titusville in 2007. So yes, it is safe. I just want to make sure that was very clear.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so let's get started. So PFOS, and this is an update from a presentation that we did back in January of 2020. So here we are in '22, talking a little bit more about it. So if we go to the next. PFOS is the name of a family of chemicals, and they are known as per and polyfluoralkyl substances. In this family, there are approximately 4,000 different compounds. In particular, tonight, we'll talk about PFOA and PFOS. That's P-F-O-A and P-F-O-S. Those are two of the 4,000 that are within this family. Some of the things about these chemicals, they are actually stable, used in many different consumer products. And one of the things I want to be clear about is that these chemicals are still in use today. PFOA and PFOS are not, but there are still some within that family of 4,000 that are currently under production. So just to review, some of the places that it has been found in the past would be in food packaging, certain household products. I'll say a few trademark names that you'll recognize, things like Scotchgard, Teflon, Stainmaster carpets. Those all use these types of compounds, and particularly for stain resistance or nonstick abilities of these compounds. It can also be found in industrial processes, in workplaces, and tonight, we're here to talk about its presence in drinking water. Some other items of note, these chemicals are bioaccumulative, and that means they don't break down, they're very stable. Approximately 95% of Americans have trace amount of these chemicals within their blood. And the problem and the concern about these chemicals is they've been linked to cancer and other serious medical issues within humans. So tonight, I wanted to kind of give you some scope about the measurements and concentrations that we'll be talking about. So this will just help you kind of realize or visualize some of these concentrations. So one part per million is equal to a drop in a 10-gallon aquarium. One part per billion is one drop in 10,000-gallon swimming pool. And one part per trillion, which that's the concentration that we're going to be talking about in specific tonight, that's equivalent of one drop in 34 Olympic swimming pools. So I think with that sort of graphic, we can understand that we're talking about extremely small quantities. On these substances, EPA issued a health advisory limit for these. And so what is a health advisory? It's a nonenforceable, nonregulatory federal standard. It's subject to change, and these standards are set to provide a margin of protection for the most sensitive populations and to protect them from adverse health effects within their drinking water. So back in 2016, EPA issued a health advisory for PFOA and PFOS of 70 parts per trillion. So if you remember, that goes back to one part per trillion is one drop in 30 Olympic-sized swimming pools. So part of the reason why we're here this evening is that that health advisory from EPA has changed drastically within the last month. In June of this year, just last month, EPA issued interim health advisories from what was 70, now it's .004 parts per trillion. So it is a significant reduction in what their previous guidance was. One of the things that I also want to note is that the current testing standards can only reach four parts per trillion, which is still significantly higher than what EPA is considering for their health advisory. They have also set limits for Gen X, which, as well as another compound, PFBS. So we can see with these changing values that EPA is still in the research phase, and they're still studying this. They have yet to issue a maximum contaminant limit for PFOS compounds, but we do expect that to come out soon, hopefully in the fall of this year. So let's talk a little bit about the monitoring that the City of Titusville has done. Back in 2014, the city tested for six different PFOS compounds. At that time, all results came back non-detect. So what that says is those six chemical compounds were not detected within the city's water, and that was taken at the point of entry of the distribution system. So one of the things, and you see a page here, this comes from our Consumer Confidence Report, and I have a number of those on the table in case anybody in the audience would like some, and I also provided some to council. And I know at the last meeting, we talked about transparency, we talked about maximum contaminant limits, putting contaminant levels in our water and putting that on the website. So we do that every year within our Consumer Confidence Report, and you can see that there in front of you. This is posted on the website. There are three years come out in April of May of each year. Within this year's, we took special attention to talk about PFOS and about the upcoming sampling and testing that the city will be doing in 2024. We also, in here, we give a table. You can see it right here. It lists maximum contaminant limits, and it lists our test results for those. So if anybody is interested to know our contaminant testing and those results, you can find that on the website, and this document is produced each year for the City of Titusville residents. So one of the things I want to talk also about is how do we sample for PFOS? Because, of course, when we talk about such small concentrations, of course, these tests must be extremely accurate. And so EPA has developed, there are three methods that EPA has approved to test drinking water for PFOS compounds, and that's 533, 537, 537.1. There are other test methods out there, but EPA has not approved those for drinking water. These are the same tests that the City of Titusville will be conducting. It will be these sampling and testing methods that will be coming up in 2024 of this year. Next, I want to talk about some other information that has been posted on social media. A concerned citizen has posted results from samples that were taken at Sandpoint Park, and so just want to kind of highlight some of that information. So in here, there are 43, I'm sorry, there are 45 different PFOS compounds that were tested in this event. 43 out of 45 were not detected, but there were two that were detected. And so what I want to highlight is that what these two values were, as well as what's important to look at, is the testing method that was used. If you look closely, you'll see that the method that was used was L402. That is not an approved EPA test method for drinking water. Okay, so I want to make that clear. We also don't know how it was sampled, and the city has not been provided any supporting information regarding this. Okay? But let's just assume that it is an accurate and correct test. So the values that were recorded were 2.8 for one PFOS compound and 7.4 for another compound. So one of the things that we did is we looked at what sort of regulations there are. So EPA has issued a health advisory for PFOS, but they have not issued a maximum contaminant limit. There are, however, a number of states throughout the United States, 18 in fact, that have developed their own standards, and they develop these on their own with their own DEPs, working with community members. And so, but you can see very clearly that Florida has not set up a standard yet. So let's take a look at what those numbers are. So you can see the range from the 18 states, and these go all the way from 6.5 parts per trillion all the way up to 700 parts per trillion for these two compounds. Now what I want to highlight is that the two that were detected in the sample from Sandpoint Park were PFOS and PFHXS. Okay? So those results respectively were 2.8 parts per trillion and 7.4 parts per trillion. So according to the 18 states, if we consider those results valid, the City of Titusville's results would be in compliance with 17 of the 18 states. The only one that they would not be compliant with would be California, and that would be a limit of 6.5, where we exceeded it with a limit of 7.4. So we can see that this regulatory landscape without EPA's guidance gives mixed signals or different goals to hit. So we know that EPA is working to set up, they have a strategic roadmap for PFOS. They are researching, restricting, and remediating PFOS within the environment. And this is a whole agency effort, and they're going to be addressing legacy PFOS within the air, water, soil, as well as those PFOS compounds that are currently used to produce certain products today. It is expected, and they have committed, that by the fall of this year, that EPA will propose a drinking water standard for both PFOA and PFOS. And this will also include guidance on treatment and will also provide notification procedures if utilities exceed those maximum contaminant limits. There's also been a bill filed by the state legislature that by 2025, the State of Florida will have a standard in place for these compounds as well. So let's talk a little bit about the upcoming monitoring that the city's going to do. We'll be doing this as part of the Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rule Number Five. This is a program, every five years, EPA reaches out to water providers, and they have them test for various compounds and potential contaminants that aren't necessarily, that don't have regulations on them. So this year, in 2024, the city will be conducting testing on 29 different PFOS compounds, and that first sample will be taken June of 2024. And so this will, this program will include over 10,000 utilities throughout the United States. They, we will collect the information for EPA, send it in, and then they'll use that data to help make rules and to further their research on this topic. One of the other things we wanted to talk about was what are our options? So if we do have PFOS within our water, what can we do about it? You know, how do we take care of that? So there are a handful of treatment options that the city could pursue if necessary. Granular activated carbon can remove PFOS. Ion exchange can also do it, as well as reverse osmosis. And so I wanted to give you just a little idea of what that would mean. So the current treatment process at the city is lime softening. If we were to change it over to reverse osmosis, and this is a well-established process, it would remove PFOS if it is found, but it comes with some significant costs associated. We put together some numbers just to see what it would actually cost, and to build a 10-million-gallon-per-day plant, which is what we would need to keep us for the next probably 30 years, we'd be looking at approximately 50 to 75 million in capital, and then about 3 million in operating costs. And then there would also be the disposal of the material from the reverse osmosis. So, you know, we wanted to put this out there just to give you an idea of what that might mean. If we, if the city does want to look at additional or different treatment than what we currently have, we can go through a screening process, we can identify which one would be best for the City of Titusville, and we can provide those costs to you. No doubt, what we, no matter what we do, there will be a cost associated with it. We'll also spend a little time with our rate consultant to try to understand what these numbers mean if they were actually put into the rate, and if this is something that we wanted to go forward with. And the rough answer is it would equal about a 30% increase to the water and sewer bill. And that would be using a bond, a conventional loan at about 5%. So we just wanted to put that out there, that it is rather impactful. So with that, we'd like to take any questions. I just want to assure everyone that my family, my children, and myself, we drink the water, and we think it's safe. Okay?
Vice Mayor. Yeah. Sean, I really appreciate your presentation on this. It certainly has gotten people riled up as far as whether we have good drinking water or not. And first of all, for you to say that your whole family drinks the water, you know, it says a lot, since you're the one. I'm sorry.
Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Anyway, I appreciate the presentation. The concern that I have, of course, is, number one, there's not a standard. And what I'm hearing is the government is going to do a study, and hopefully, the result of that study will say, this is where it should be. What is interesting is you've got 18 states that set their standard at 70 parts per trillion. And if we were to believe, and I'm just going to assume that the testing that was done at Sandpoint, if everything was correct, used the scientific measurements and all this good stuff, we had 7.4, I think it was?
That's correct.
7.4, which is a long ways from 70 parts per million for 18 states.
Yes.
Now, you, also what concerned me was you said that if we wanted to do something about PFOS, about removing it from the water, first of all, we don't know what the standard would be, and you can assume that the standard, if 18 states are going with 70, more than likely, it's going to be somewhere up in that number that the EPA is going to come back with. So if we were to find out that we were at 50, that would not dictate us doing anything unless council decides that they just want to take it out of the water.
Yes.
And with that, that would require us to put in a reverse osmosis system or some kind of charcoal system that would, I assume it would eliminate it from the drinking water.
That would be the expectation, but of course, all drinking water is different. And so no matter what we did, we would have to do a pretty intensive study and a pilot test on our water to make sure that the goals set by council are achieved.
Yeah, the booklet that you put out, the Water Resource booklet that you put out, there is a section about PFOS, and we've been putting this out, how long? How long has this been put out?
I believe the reference to PFOS is new for this year because of the upcoming sampling in 2024. I don't believe we referenced that last year.
Okay. One of the things, and I don't see a page number on here, but when we look at the water analysis, there's more than PFOS in our water. There's also arsenic in the water, and barium, and cyanide, and fluoride, and all these other things. And I'm just wondering, as a water resource person, should we go out and try to remove all these things so it'll be zero in our water also?
No matter what water we have, it will always have some dissolved solids, some materials in it. The water- The water that everybody drinks is a product of where it came from. And so if we, if we were to create an absolutely pure water product, it would actually be poisonous, and it would remove those materials from the pipes and from our bodies. So we, we all understand that water is not pure. There is no such thing as pure. But what you do is EPA lists what those maximum contaminant limits are, and then we test against those to show that while we may have small amounts of those constituents, the levels that they are in are still safe for human consumption.
One of the things that I was thinking about as we were thinking about waters, how often, and I'm sure most of us who come from little, small towns, we had drinking wells. So we just drunk it right out of, you know, the faucet or drunk it right out of a well. And that water was not treated at all.
Right. Absolutely.
So one would assume that all the things that we're doing to make sure that our citizens have clean water is a whole lot better than what we were doing just getting the raw water out of the ground.
I would agree.
We agree with that. All right. Thank you for your presentation. I just want to make sure that we understand that there's no standard. As an engineer, of course, you've got to have standards if you're going to measure anything. And if, and if the measurements aren't plus or minus whatever, then what do you do with it? Right? So you've got to have standards before you can say we've got a problem. And you also have to have a standard on how you're going to measure this thing, and everybody has to be measuring it the same way in order for the EPA to say, yeah, you're above or below what you, you need to have. Because I would assume that we would have to report whatever we find, and I think we do that.
Yes, absolutely.
Right? So, all right. The only other thing I would say, because I think you said we were on a, basically a five-year cycle to test water?
That's correct. The Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Program from EPA is a five-year program. So every five years, they reach out to the water providers and give you a list of constituents that you need to test for. These are all constituents that could be considered contaminants, but they have yet to put a rule together for them. So, and it happens that this time, a PFOS is on the list for this five-year cycle.
Okay. The, the only thing I would suggest counsel, just to consider, that once we do find out what the standard is, it certainly wouldn't harm us if we go ahead and tested to make sure that we are at that standard even before we have to do it per the requirement. I think you said 2024.
Actually, we're, we're hopeful EPA on their roadmap, they have indicated that in the fall of this year. So, you know, October, November, we should have a maximum contaminant limit for PFOS. So we'll know what our target is at that point. We'll know what the benchmark that we need to meet is.
Okay, so if there is a big, you know, concern about whatever it is, because I think we need to educate people with the facts of exactly what the level should be and where we are. And in order to do that, you've got to have updated information.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to come back when those are released, and we can talk again about what information EPA has put out.
Okay, because I would suggest that if they do put something new out, how much does it cost, or what do you think it would cost for us to do a test early or do it right after we, we find out?
It's in the range of a couple thousand dollars.
I would certainly suggest we do something like that. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Real quick, along those same lines, EPS, APS. EPA says, test every five years?
That's correct.
And that seems like a long time to me. Can we do more than that if we want to?
We can certainly test, we can do any kind of testing anywhere we would like.
Yeah, okay, we can talk about that. As Vice Mayor said, we've got to get some standards here. And when we get some standards and we get some numbers, as I understand it, that there's an agreement that we'd like to test as soon as we get our, those numbers. Right?
So what we can do is, is when a limit is released, we'll bring back a presentation as well as some proposed sampling schedules and some options for council, and we can bring back some prices as well with our recommendation.
Okay. Again, I think what, what I'm hearing here and what I'm thinking and wrote down early is as soon as we can get some standards from EPA, then we can test. Will the state, will our state come up with some standards? Because that's, that's a little concerning too, that there's no state standards.
Yeah, in some of the research that I did preparing for the presentation, I did read that there was legislation filed this last session that Florida will have a standard by 2025. And they're going to require DEP to propose a standard by then.
Okay, I actually got a signal that that was going to happen, so. Okay, good, because I didn't know that. So, because that's important. I'm looking at this map, it's almost embarrassing. What, there's 17? 17 states have a 18?
18, I know. Not a lot.
That's kind of ridiculous. I'll just leave it at that. I just would say that as soon as we get a number from either our state or the EPA or somebody, let's test and see where we're at with that.
We'll be back.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Just a follow-up. When you do the testing, you're doing it after you have treated the water.
That's correct. So part of the, the sampling, that's part of the Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Program, is it, they call it the POE, and that stands for Point of Entry. And that's where the water has been treated, and just before it is delivered to the city of Titusville and the customers. That is the sampling location.
So do you do any testing before you treat the water, just to see what's in there?
We test every hour about eight to nine constituents, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. So there are all manner of tests that are occurring during the treatment of the water. Now, a lot of those are process tests to make sure that we're meeting our goals as the water is being treated. So it is monitored continuously.
Okay. Last question. The sample that a citizen brought forward, where was that the water taken?
I believe it was Sandpoint Park.
I mean, at a faucet?
Uh, I believe at a water fountain. I'm not sure, though.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Member Robinson.
Yeah, just one question. Thank you for the presentation and PFOS. I know, and Vice Mayor brought it up, I, I read the bottles of bottled water that we go to the store to buy. I've attended training and lectures on, on, on the processes and the difference between city water and bottled water and the, and the process, processes in which it goes through. Has PFOS been eliminated from bottled water?
Not that I know of, no. In fact, I've not seen any test results.
I did my research on that one, and it has not been eliminated from bottled water. So because the process is still that we don't have a standard, and I agree with the Vice Mayor, and that standard is going to, when the standards come out, I believe that it's going to overturn a whole lot of things. Because not only the cities have to face that issue, the manufacturers or the people who sell bottled water will have to do the same. And that's my thought, because I want to make sure I put that in, as you did your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, no other council member comments? Reason I say, well, the reason I say that, I don't have anything up here for you, and I did have a member, Aker, and he's not even up here. So I'm kind of lost up here tonight, guys. Go ahead.
Sean, when we were talking the other day, you were talking about the number of products that are using these chemicals, including like toothpaste, sunscreen, what else?
There are many products, personal care products, that use PFOS. I think probably some of the ones that are, you know, most, most noticeable would be non-stick pans, and they talk about that. Read a long article about how to properly use a non-stick pan. And they say that there's, there's a limited chance of the PFOS coming out if it's used properly. But part of what they talk about is it can't have any scratches in it, it can't get it too hot. So, you know, I mean, we, we've all had non-stick pans, and, you know, they all have scratches in them. So that's just how it is. So, you know, I think that, and part, and that's, that's what EPA is looking at. It's not only the legacy items that may be in groundwater or at military bases or airports, but it's the, it's those chemicals that they're still using today and still producing today. So it is, it is a concern, and, 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 you know, the main problem is the material doesn't break down. It's always there. It's not going to go away. And, and that's, that's why it has the health problem, and that's why we need to take it very seriously.
So if we put it in landfill?
It'll end up coming out of the landfill leachate, which may end up going to the wastewater plant, which then could go other places into reclaimed or application of biosolids where it could be concentrated. So, so there's, this is, that's why EPA is taking a whole agency approach to this problem, because it is, it's more than just drinking water.
So I was talking to a lady the other night, and she said she has a reverse osmosis machine in her house. Is that something that might help people?
So reverse osmosis is a technology that will take off, that will take out PFOS. So that is something that you can do. What we would say is we would caution anybody that relies on these systems to make sure that they're operated properly, as well as, one of the things, if you have a whole house reverse osmosis system, you'll want to be careful to make sure that you flush your lines regularly. Because one of the things that RO, reverse osmosis, it also pulls out any residual chlorine that may be in there, any disinfectant. And so anytime you have water and you don't have disinfectant, you can encourage bacteria growth.
Okay.
So we would just, you know, just caution that all of these systems, that the customers be very careful with their use to protect their health and to get the value that, of what they provide and make sure that there aren't any other sideline effects.
So for people who are really concerned about it, she said she's paid like $200 for it. So that's, that's one way of dealing with it. Any other thoughts other than throwing out the non-stick pans?
I think, you know, if, if our customers are concerned, you know, there are a number of links out there from the EPA website where they talk about those technologies where you can filter the water. So the, there's also, you know, you can put a carbon filter on your faucet, that's another way. But we would advise that the customer do their research to make sure that what they're purchasing certifies that it will be doing the job that they're expecting it to do. Because there are many things on the market, there are not many that guarantee non-detectable PFOS or other constituents like that. So I would just say buyer beware.
So one last question. 2014, we tested the water. And how sensitive was that test? How far, what could it detect in terms of how many parts per trillion?
I don't have that on the tip of my tongue. I do know that it was the certified test at that time. I'm not sure if it was down to the four parts per trillion that we were talking about currently. I do know that was 10 years ago, and of course, over these 10 years, we've learned a lot. Test methods have changed. What I do know is that the test methods that we'll be using coming up in 2024, those will be the current best-to-have methods from EPA.
Okay. I think, what's that? Yeah.
Member Stokoe.
Yep, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Sean. Couple clarifying questions. Do we have any citizens that are on wells at all that we know of?
Yes, there are many drinking wa, drinking water wells within.
For that, citizens, for their, their house specifically?
Mm-hmm.
And to...
I mean, they're not our customers, but...
That's what I'm getting at. They're not, but they're in, within city of Titusville, but they're not our customers.
That's correct.
Okay. And then the other question, so I know we test the PFOS at the facility itself. Is it possible for PFOS to get into the drinking water once it leaves the facility and then comes out of the customer's tap?
I wouldn't expect so, but I certainly can't rule it out.
Okay.
You know, part of our monitoring plan can include different locations as well when we come forward with the standard.
Okay.
Okay. The current requirements from EPA for the Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rule, that has us test only at the water plant. Okay?
Okay.
Certainly that can be expanded if council wishes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to think, because I don't know about you guys when you sit in your briefings, but once you saw the pricing of some of this, I was like, oh, some of this is not realistic. So I'm thinking of what are some things that we can do, and I think that increasing our testing, which has been mentioned, I think would be a good idea, and maybe increasing locations. I want to hear from the citizens, but another thing I was thinking of, and I know we talked about this as well, is potentially having a filter program where we offered some at the city. And I would like to see maybe more education, seeing what other cities are doing as far as educating the citizens. So if we don't have money to maybe do it, the best thing that we can do, at least doing what we can, and then educating our citizens so they can make their own informed decision, potentially. So that's kind of where I'm leaning.
Okay, we can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Anybody else from council?
The only, if I may.
Yes, absolutely, sir.
The, the only thing that, I love what Sarah said, that we can make our own informed decisions, but if everything's got PFOS in it, you know, you're either going to drink water or not drink water. So is, is going to be a tough decision to make, even the bottled water has it in there. So it is, it is going to, I, I, I agree with all that has been said. We do need to set up and monitor it, stay aware of it, keep our citizens informed. But it is kind of like that we don't know what the ultimate result is probably going to have a different, and if it's in a different effect on so many people. And it's in our frying pans and, and everything else, you know, those eggs that you're going to get up and cook in the morning, and you stir them with a fork and scratch that pan and it's have to be there as well. So, and that's why, and I'm glad the alarm has been sounded, and let's educate, educate, and educate a little bit more.
We'll do our best, sir.
Are you, no? Okay. Reason I say that, Dr. Aker's back up again. But anyway, I want to thank you for the report. I was going to also say, and I know I'll get to say it again after our citizen speak, I'm glad this became an issue. We had a briefing on this a couple years ago, I think, or a presentation, and now I'm, I'm seeing it a lot of places, not, not just here. I'm just, it's something that's coming around, and usually alarm, ring the bell, whatever. It brings an awareness. And even looking at this map, I was not aware how few states had any standards. I was not aware that our state had no standards until we started researching this. And I wasn't aware that we didn't test, EPA didn't test, except, what did you say, every four years? Was it every four years?
Every five years.
Every five years? To me, that's, that's not adequate. So we can talk more about that, but I think we've already talked about, once we get a standard, we want to test and see if we're within that standard. All right, anybody else in the council? All right, thank you so much, Sean. I appreciate the information.
Thank you.
I do have one other question.
I knew that was coming. That's why I was looking over there.
Yeah, I was just thinking, what you just said about how often we test, and you, you test every day when, when you're bringing water in, correct?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, there's probably seven or eight different tests that occur at the water plant every hour.
Could that be one of them that we would do?
No, no, we don't. Those tests that we do, those are, we, we actually, we take the samples at the water plant, and then we have a small lab there at the water plant, and we conduct the testing ourselves.
Okay.
The testing for these compounds, and we talked about how small percentage is, what small concentrations we're looking for.
Right.
It has to go to a certified lab to be tested. And currently, there are only a few labs within the United States that are certified to conduct these tests. Luckily, one of them happens to be in New Smyrna Beach, Pace Labs. We have a contract with them, that's all set up and ready to go. So, but no, we, the city cannot test for PFOS on its own.
That's good to know.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you very much. City manager.
Onto item 4D, which is letters of appreciation that were received from our citizens about our employees. From the Solid Waste Department, Jonathan Barrio; from Community Development, Mr. Tim Ford; from Fire and Rescue, Jerry Ford; Joshua Farner; Jonathan Gore; Sean Holbrook; and Jeff Trenton; and from the Police Department, Nicholas Eaton; William Mick; and Carly Roves.
Thank you. And now we move to petitions and requests, and this is obviously open to anything here, but clearly it's a water day. So, but, well, it is. So petitions and requests, three minutes, and we go, when someone sits down, you may come back up. Trenton, your card. Professional engineer. All right. Hit your light. Hit it, turn on.
Just push the light.
Turn, push the button. There, there you go.
All right. Let's start at about 2:50 or so, but anyhow, 2:40. Stan Johnston, and I, I'm, I gave you a card because I'm a professional engineer. I've been also educated in sanitary engineering when I got my degree, and I know... And I know, I believe it's, I'm pretty sure, is that, uh, Mr. uh, uh, Stauffer didn't get a, an engineering degree and didn't have sanitary engineering in his graduate, uh, his education in that way. I'm sure he's had some since then. But, um, I'm concerned about, uh, what has been said here. Because, uh, when I'm reading the news, I'm not reading seven parts per trillion. Uh, I'm reading The Guardian, in which I've, I, I thought I've shared with everybody here. It says 176 parts per trillion. I said, it's 176 parts per trillion. So why are we talking about seven parts per trillion or four parts per trillion? When the test was 176 parts per trillion for the City of Titusville, according to The Guardian, the national newspaper. Hello, anybody home? 176 parts per trillion. Now, how many sources? When I go to, when I was in West Virginia, we got our, our, our drinking water from the Elk River. That was one source. In the City of Titusville, how many sources do we have for our drinking water? How many do you think we have? We have over 20 sources. All it takes is one source. What if that one source is given 1,000 parts per trillion? We don't know. We have over 20 sources. Let me explain. We have all kinds of wells. We has, we have, we, we see water from the City of Coco. We receive water from Farmington. We receive water from, I don't know, probably more than 15 mil, uh, wells in the City of Titusville. All we need is one of those to be contaminated. We need to test. And we don't need to wait till June of 2024. I don't understand it. 176 parts per trillion, and you guys are going to be accountable for this, what the decision you make tonight. I want you to make a, do testing now, now. And what I would advise you to do is recommend for all, all these customers that we have in the City of Titusville to use something such as granulated activated carbon that you can have in your home for, to filter your water. It would be a, a good idea to do. Stella Bailey might mention something about that. But right now, I want you to be accountable, and I, as far as what I can see is what you're doing tonight is, is you've sloughed it away. You say it's safe. Mr. Stauffer has written and said that it's, it's safe, although we have 176 parts per trillion reported. And the recent, I'd like another minute, please.
I see none.
I, 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 absolutely sure, certainly, because I'm just a professional engineer. You know, give me another minute, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, petitions and requests.
Jill Lynn, could you, could you test your microphone now? We've seen, no, just press it to see if it's Dr. Aker or not.
I can play Dr. Aker. That's fun.
Go ahead. Go, hit it. No, now your member Robinson.
Really?
Yeah. All right, let's, we'll hold on that.
We'll continue to work on that.
All right, go ahead, ma'am, thank you.
Take your time.
I've got names popping up here that aren't even here.
I'm, I'm Elizabeth Baker, Titusville. Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, one is, Mr. Stauffer, do you filter your water at home? Do you have an RO filter or a Brita filter that you use, or are you just drinking it directly out of the tap?
Drink it straight from the tap.
Okay. Wondering. Um, the other question is, if we're only testing at the plant, does that mean that the city is only responsible for the water at the plant? Or is the city responsible for the water at the tap?
Well, I'm not the water expert, I think, well, really and truly, because I thought, uh, Ms., uh, Stokoe, Member Stokoe, brought up a good point about, can something happen from the plant?
Right.
To the outlet. So I think that we're, you know, and, and being mentioned, we're just passing up here. I think we've all asked questions and we're, we're not done asking questions.
Right, right. Well, and I just wonder, like, are, are we, has there ever been testing at the tap in people's homes?
Go ahead, uh, Mr. Stauffer.
Uh, as far as PFOS testing, no. Uh, the testing that we have done, part, that was part of the unregulated contaminant monitoring rule requires us to test at the point of entry, the POE. So that's the point when it leaves the plant and enters the distribution system.
Okay. So, I, I guess I want to know, like, where, if something were to happen? If somebody found out that they had, you know, a million parts per trillion coming out of their tap? But it was testing fine at the plant. Who is responsible for that? Like, I want to know, like, is the city responsible? When it comes out of my tap, is, can I say, well, the City of Titusville needs to make sure that my water is safe coming out of my tap in my home?
So, the delivery system that we have for our drinking water is a pressurized system. And it usually operates around 50 or 60 PSI. So that means that if there is any type of, uh, defect or hole in the pipeline, water comes out, doesn't come in. Okay? So, we wouldn't expect there to be PFOS, uh, that comes in through the distribution system. Um, and so, I wouldn't expect so. But certainly, if we're finding it at the meter, is that's where the City of Titusville, so, um, in, in our distribution system, the city's system ends at the meter. Okay? And then everything from the meter on up to the house, that's the customer's responsibility. Okay, that's the private side of the pipe.
Right, right.
So, if, if somehow something is getting in or any, uh, some way, we find it prior to the meter, then yes, that would be the city's responsibility.
Okay.
Okay?
Right, I appreciate that. Um, and I will just say this. Uh, the EPA has been moving quite rapidly on this subject and obviously several states have. Thank you. Um, I'm with you. I don't think we should wait. I think the alarm has been sounded.
And I think that I kind of heard that up here, and these are things that, I don't sit in the water plant all day and sometimes think, because you, you're the mayor, you know, I don't know all this stuff.
Right.
So, I don't understand even the EPA. They're, they are the experts. Every five years, that's a little surprising to me. The fact that so few states have a standard is surprising to me. So, yeah, I agree. I think the more, and I won't say the more we test and get caught up in, you know, 20, every five hours or something. But I think that more than being, is being done. I'm with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next person, whoever it may be. We don't have cards on this, by the way, so we don't call cards. So, when you see no one standing there, it's your turn.
Nathan Slushard, 860 Allen Dose Street. First of all, I do want to say thank you. I was actually really happy with that. I thought the presentation was going to tell you guys, ask a bunch of questions that were excellent. So, um, I was, I was very satisfied with that. However, I see two issues that I would like to see the city as a whole address. I understand the EPA does not have standards yet, yet. And that is the concerning issue. But this is Titusville. Why do we need the EPA to tell us what's right or wrong? I understand they set minimum standards. But I would believe that we have the people that could set standards and then go do testing, whether it be at the states that already exist, or what we know is in legislation in Florida. We can set our own standards and set the own bar for Brevard, for Florida, and say, Titusville will do this ourselves. We'll set a bar and we'll do our own testing. We know how to get, in fact, you said we have a laboratory that tests with us, that's fantastic, they're close. Why would we wait until the EPA puts out standards? They're just minimum standards is all they, or I guess in this case it'd be maximum standards. But that's all it is. It's, it's a line. It's not a bare thing that you can do. It's just the very least you can do. And with that comes the PR problem that we currently have. Because if any citizen, one citizen comes to the city with actual laboratory test, even if they're not an EPA type of test, if it is from a scientific laboratory and it says, hey, we discovered two of, I'm sorry, 45 positive, then that should trigger the city to test and go, wait a second, then we need to make sure that our tests say nothing. We should not be waiting until 2024, which you have said, and I'm super happy with. But we also should not be waiting until fall of 2022. We should be doing it now. This, this is popping up in conversations that are outside of the city where citizens are genuine, genuinely concerned. And I'm hearing it from people that I would never have thought of, and, and I'm like, okay, well, then this is important. Why can't we do the test and just print the results? And if you want to wait on the standards, then we have the standards, as soon as they come out, we can make a decision. We're worried about cost of building a facility, but we don't even know if it's going to be in the water based on the test that we use. Thank you.
Sean, let me ask you, because I have, have mentioned that myself. I wondered, um, are we even allowed to do something, uh, above and beyond the, you know, EPA, or how's that work?
Yes, we can.
And is there something that would, if we do that, is, is there some way that, um, well, let me just ask, why wouldn't we do that? And what stand, what number would we, would we choose? I guess that's another factor, what standard would it be?
I can't answer the question about what the standard should be. I mean, that, that is something that you would, we would need to have consultations with doctors, uh, you know, other, um, professionals about how do you determine what's safe for human consumption and what's not. If the city council wants to set a goal, uh, we can certainly reach that. Um, I know there are some municipalities, uh, in the Northeast that have set a goal of non-detect. They don't have a limit, they just say, we don't want to see any of it in our drinking water. And that is the goal and the charge that they gave the utility. So, and I think that, you know, part of why we talk about, um, you know, fall of '22, we'll have a, a marker or a target. You know, that's, that's what we need, that's what the engineers need, is that target and that goal, so that we can go and achieve that. Um, and, and so it's hard for us to know what sort of treatment technologies or how far to take it if, if I don't have a target. And that's, that's what we're looking for. And I think that's why we've kind of been leaning on fall of '22 that we'll have that target. To go back to your first question, there is nothing that prevents us from doing testing, uh, on our own now. And we can certainly do that. Uh, I can come back to the next council meeting with a, with a sampling plan and some costs associated with it, and we can talk that through.
Well, I don't know if we need to vote on that, but I think I'm hearing clearly, we'd like to, you know, have a, some kind of message brought back to us of what it would take to test, you know, more often. And again, I'll be very honest with you, and, and I don't like to keep using these kind of analogies, but it won't be athletic, it'll be educational. I've been in education for 42 years, and if you test a person every five years, that doesn't work. I think you really have to ta- test as the material has gotten out there. And I, I think that if we can supersede the numbers, we can certainly supersede the test requirements. And, uh, you know, again, come back with some ideas of what would be good test requirements, but I don't think anybody up here is thinking five years is a good idea. So, with that, um, we'll go to, I'm sorry, do I have?
Yeah.
Oh, I even got your name this time.
Got my name? Oh, good. Sean, the EPA is doing a lot of research, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And trying to come up with the data to tell us what's going to be safe and what's not going to be safe. So if we turn around and test right now, how are we going to understand and interpret that data?
And that is the concern. You know, we, uh, we can come back, certainly if, if everything comes back non-detect, then, uh, we'll all feel good about the testing. Um, but absent a standard, um, it then becomes what is the goal of the City of Titusville? What is it that we want to achieve as a city? Uh, because I can't, you know, I can't presuppose what EPA is going to list as their maximum contaminant limit for PFOS. I don't know what that's going to be.
I'm sort of thinking we could go ahead and test, and we'd have the, the numbers.
We can certainly have the numbers ahead of the fall release of the number, that is correct.
So that would work. But it would be good to, at least after that, have the EPA numbers, so we know what they mean. Uh, and then the other question is, do we have a test that is going to be sensitive enough to really come up with these numbers?
Uh, if, if, I, I will assure you that if we do go forward with testing, we will use the best available test methods out there that are approved by EPA. We'll make sure that if we invest in this testing, that we do it properly.
Might be worth it. Actually, I think it would be worth it.
Member Robinson?
Yeah, when, when we get too much in a hurry, uh, to try to solve a problem that has been around a long time, but it's just becoming, we're just becoming aware of it. There's always the possibility of a cause and effect. If, when EPA does something, or they try to come up with standards or living, they have not, uh, only tested to what's going to eradicate our water of PFOS, but all in the process of eradicating our water of PFOS, it may eradicate something in our water that is necessary for us to have in, in the water. So all of those tests must be done. That's why it's important, uh, for us to wait and see, yes, we should. Uh, I'm not against early testing, that's a positive thing. But even if it's, we, we find, uh, a level that, uh, is just beyond what the EPA present standards are, and we get too, become too aggressive in trying to take it out of the water, we may end up doing more harm than good in the long term. So, maybe after we get our PFOS level down, five years from now, we'll find out because it's down, something else is up. So now what are we going to do? So, uh, I, I'm cautioning the council is that let's not, uh, get too, uh, far ahead of EPA in the process of what they have to go through to give us direction. Because they have many, many more resources and, and testing so many, such a larger range than we have. So let us, let us move, uh, not like a tortoise, but very carefully, because there is that cause and effect that is, is, is out there.
And I don't disagree with that, especially since EPA is right around the corner. We're going into August and fall is a couple of months away. I, I'm, I'm okay with that. I'm just saying we need to, we need to consider testing more often. The more testing you have, the more data you have. And that makes it more accurate. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I, remember Robinson said exactly what I was thinking. I was a little nervous about where, how far we were going to go without having a standard. And to do a test, you find a number, there are some who say, okay, that number is okay. There's going to be others that say, oh, that number is too high. If it's, if it's not zero, everything is too high. So you got to be real careful with that, because everything does cost, uh, for sure. We want to make sure the citizens are safe, but we got to also make sure that we're doing it the right way by having a standard. We, we get testing now, we get a number. And one of the things I was wondering about is, I think our number was 7.8. There was 18 states out there that has, uh, numbers as less than 70, um, and some that is more than 70. Then, um, California, I think, was what, 6.5? So, we are right above, so 18 of the states we were fine. I'm sorry, 17 of the states we were fine, one we weren't. Is that good? You know? So, we just need to, to slow those roll, make sure we do it right, um, to make sure we can protect the citizens for, you know, we got to have knowledge. And just going out and doing something, just to be doing it, is, is not the right thing. Because if the EPA does come out and say, hey, if the number is going to be five and we're at seven, and in order for you to get rid of that, their standard is going to be, you're going to have to build a big, uh, reverse osmosis machine for your state, your city. Uh, I did hear someone say that your city, uh, water is going to go up 30%. I did hear that. And nobody wants their water to go up. And I would guarantee you, there'd be people who are complaining, um, that we are doing something and they don't feel they're being harmed by it. So, we just need to make sure, council members, make sure we're doing, uh, the right thing. And I think the mayor is absolutely correct. You say the fall, fall is next month.
Yeah, right there. Right there. Might as well wait, I think. It's not like we got to wait a year for it, so I'm not that upset about that. I just need a number and I need to test, where, see where we're at with it.
Exactly, for sure.
And do so often.
All right. Um, one of the, uh, things, I think, one of the citizens said was, um, if they find that there is PFOS in their water at their house, the only way they're going to be able to find that out is to have a test done that is per the standards that the EPA would put out, correct? I mean, you just can't have a citizen say, hey, I got PFOS in my water and you need to clean it up for me.
Uh, yeah, I, I think to, to, to vet and to confirm potential contamination, you know, we would accept it. We would only accept those methods that are approved by EPA.
So the answer is, yeah, we, we would make sure that we would clean it up if it's coming from our water.
I think the other thing we would do too is, there would be additional testing would be done. And we'd look up and down the street, because the concern is that it's not just one house.
Right.
You know, so that would, we would definitely recommend to the council that we do a full investigation of why that's there.
Right, but you did say, though, the water, as far as the city water is concerned, it stops at the property line. at the property line.
That is correct.
And whatever happens after that would be the citizens' challenge.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Nelson?
And I just want to add this. Sarah brought this up. Maybe carbon filter program where we're giving out carbon filters to people to filter out their drinking water might be appropriate.
All right, next up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to bring up Stan's comment.
Say your name, for the record.
Oh, Stell Bailey, Coca-Florida.
Thank you.
Stan brought up The Guardian and how we found Detective 176 parts per trillion using the TOF. They also use the EPA 537 test. I'm not going to say too much tonight. I have a lot of thoughts. I've talked to some of you regarding this information and all of the work that we've done personally in perfluorinated compounds. I do want to offer on public record that if you are a city resident, we are trying to collect data, and we will use the 537 method, and we will, we've already been offered money, funding. So if we want to get data and we want to hire Pace Labs, we have access to that laboratory as well, including Eurofins. The test that was shown tonight with Sandpoint Park, if you have any questions about that, Fight for Zero did that. And we did use the 537 method when we collected those samples. I understand that they are not the method that is wanted by the city of Titusville, which, you know, I encourage you to come right behind us and do your method and test that water fountain next to the splash pad and let us know if you detect anything. I encourage anyone to come behind us and check our work. Just because it's not the method that the city would like doesn't mean it's wrong and that we didn't, that they're not there. And that's just, that's just that. And I also want to end with, Fight for Zero is an organization that's meant as a resource for these communities. And that is the bridge that we want to get. We don't want to be up here having to go do testing, come back and say, well, your test is this and your test is that, and it's not right. We want to work together. And I think I've brought that up before. And again, I want to thank the council members that did take the time to conversate with us, have this discussion, and to really listen and ask the questions that needed to be asked tonight. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kate Perez, 3025 South Washington Avenue. I wonder if any of you actually watched the video of Stell's family? How many of them got cancer? What type of cancer they got? Any, you see that? Were you aware that there were cancer clusters involved in the genesis of the Fight for Zero program? No? Yeah, one, okay. Because, believe it or not, some of us, well, at least two of us in this room, let's say, were at the Republican Party's North Brevard Republican, I guess, forum at the Police Hall of Fame for city council candidates. We were all asked about PFOS at that meeting. And I'm talking Republicans now, okay? They were very concerned. I mean, there's not that many questions, there's only seven questions, surprise questions. That was one of the seven surprise questions. That's how concerned people are here. And it shows a lack of trust, I think, as well, in whether the city's doing what they should be doing. So I don't know why you wouldn't just go ahead and test right now. It's not, it's nothing like the amount we're spending on the plastic plants, right? Just test it. Test the same place that she did her test and make it public, and just let us know. I don't see why there's a problem with that, why we're going around and around here. Just let us know, okay?
Yeah, I would, and I was going to say that anyway. Yeah, I'm not sure either. But anyway, I would agree. I don't see any problem. And I just got done saying, I don't know how much I can say it, the more testing, the more valid. I don't run the department, so I don't want to say you need to do this, this, and this. But I do say that I didn't realize where the Sandpoint test was taken, et cetera. I certainly have no problem endorsing, following the same water fountain, see what the results are. I just don't, you know, and I liked the words previously about, you know, work together. Sometimes we get caught up in here that, you know, we want clean water and they don't want clean water, we want trees, you don't want, I work together here. And I thought that was well said. So if we, the more we can work together, the better. I have no doubt, Sean, that you're, thank you. I have no doubt, Sean, you're doing absolutely everything you know to do, and you're doing a great job. But if there's issues, let's know there's issues. It doesn't look like our numbers show that we have any issues like that. But again, the one thing I don't like is to test every five years. And if it's not that expensive to test, and even if it is, let's find out what we can do with that. The only way to find out is to keep testing, or test early and often. So I don't disagree with that. And I've kind of said that all along. Next up.
Bill Klein, 3 Indian River Avenue, Titusville, Florida. I was going to bring up another subject, if that's okay at this point.
I guess it's petition's request, sure.
Good. I have a proposal that I'd like to make on doing a gateway at US-1 to Titusville. I'm proposing to building a north US-1 gateway to Titusville that would utilize the city right-of-way easement in the west area of Sandpoint Park to make a magnificent gateway into Titusville. I've seen other cities that have a beautiful park as part of their gateway welcoming visitors to the city. Some of the advantages I see is we can clean up and landscape the polluted stormwater pond in the middle of the median. Right now, right in front of Sandpoint Park is a rather messy-looking pond. Remove the exotic invasive Malaluk and Brazilian peppers in the median strip there. Landscape this pond into an attractive wetland with native trees and flowering plants that bloom during different seasons for interest and beauty. Plant large keystone canopy trees over the present sidewalk from the marina to Titusville. This will provide a cooling shaded entrance welcoming marina visitors into Titusville. There are a lot of people who go to the marina and walk into Titusville. Right now, there's no trees over that walkway. Plant shade trees and littoral flowering plants around the west Sandpoint Park pond. They will help cool and clean up the pond. It would also be an impressive sight from the road. Mulch around the trees, shrubs, and flowers to prevent the need for weed whackers that damage and kill trees. Stop using herbicides that produce the brown rings of death around plant sidewalks and benches. Parents do not want to expose their children and pets to cancers caused by herbicides. Herbicides also kill aquatic plants and decay that decay and produce nutrient pollution and algae growth. Install a large welcome to Titusville sign in the median. Install benches under the shade trees along the west pond for visitors to rest and admire the scenery. Install educational signs explaining the advantages of trees and littoral plants that reduce the heat island effect, reduce stormwater, provide wildlife habitat, and protect the IRL. These design concepts would visibly demonstrate that Titusville is a tree city and gateway to nature. I've been told that the current balance of the tree mitigation fund is around $504,479. This money can be used for the project because it will plant trees, mitigate some of the damage due to the loss of trees, provide cooling in the park, and be a beautiful gateway to Titusville.
First of all, I want to say, having read your email, because that's pretty much what that was, when I read it, I thought, what a lot of, a great thought went into this. And I sit next to you, so, well, sometimes they move me around in our meetings, but sometimes I sit next to Bill. And I always appreciate your thinking out of the box, thinking in the box, just thinking for what you see to be best for the city. I want to say that. And then that sounds, you know, in many ways, a wonderful thing. I think that there's, and this wouldn't be the place where we could say, hey, let's go do that. Where would the next, who would be the person within staff to discuss this with? Would that be?
Mr. Cook.
That's what I thought.
And council has approved two signs right now that are in the process.
And we have certainly worked on some gateways, and I saw some more enhancement there and some very nice thought. But if you want to go further, because Mr. Cook is working on the gateways, if you could kind of, if you didn't, maybe at least email that to him and start the conversation.
Sure, I'd love to do that. And I welcome the opportunity, because this would be a thing I think all groups would work together on.
Clearly, it was a passionate thought, and I took it that way. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
All right, buddy. Anybody else up? One up, one out. One up, one out.
Hi, I'm Casey Nance, Maryland Avenue. And I just have some more thoughts on what Bill was referring to. And I like your idea, let's work together. I remember that last fall, you indicated a desire to include in the Titusville gateway plans an entryway project on north US-1 just south of the overpass on the railway. You visualize seeing a lovely landscape entranceway while descending the overpass and entering the city from the north on US-1. I like your idea. I don't know the status of the north US-1 gateway project. I have been interacting with Mr. Cook on this through emails, and I do know one thing is that the west pond at Sandpoint Park once made a lovely impression on one as you entered the city from the north. The pond was an attractive, beautiful place with wading birds and the threatened wood stork. As I live on the north side of Titusville, I often would glance at the west pond as I drove by admiring this iconic scene. Now I avert my eyes as I drive by as the pond is covered with green scum littered with trash. While one might see a wading bird, it's certainly not an appealing sight as one enters the city. As well, the ditch in the median between US-1's traffic lane is an eyesore with herbicide-sprayed vegetation, invasive trees, and trash. So I just really, I would like to see the west pond cleaned up, is what I would like to see. The floating vegetated beamats installed by the city have removed considerable nitrogen, but more needs to be done. I'm sure the city and the parks and recreation could do more to clean up that pond and the ditch, because that is what we see as we drive into town. I like the idea of this area becoming the US, north US-1 gateway project after cleaning the median's dead vegetation, removing invasive species. Maybe a bald cypress could be planted there to help absorb stormwater runoff in the ditch. Titusville gateway sign could be installed with native Florida flowers and shrubs as well. The west Sandpoint Park entryway gardenway could be upgraded. Volunteers have worked on this garden many times, but without funding to purchase plants and mulch, only so much can be done by volunteers. Please consider improving the north entranceway to Titusville at US-1 at Sandpoint Park, beginning with cleaning up the west pond and the median ditch, removing invasive species, adding native trees and plants. And a big sign, Titusville gateway to nature and space. It sounds good. Thank you.
Amen, thank you. Anybody else? If there's no one else for petitions or requests, I think I've heard it said, I do appreciate that the, I don't want to say the, yeah, well, the bell was rung. I mean, we have an idea. I've learned a lot of things in the last couple of weeks, and I'm going to learn a lot more. And I look forward to, Sean, having you come back and give us an idea about testing and maybe increasing that. With that, city manager, is there anything you guys have over there? Council, anything? Let's look for 7 o'clock reconvene, meeting adjourned.
Alcohol interferes with balance, coordination, and judgment. These effects are heightened by sun exposure and heat. Sue is a smart gal. If she had known this before she went to that party, things could have turned out much differently. In real life, we don't get a do-over. Don't drink and ride. One foolish act can ruin a thousand other great ones.